Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Wheatfield's meeting. We're going to start this evening with a preliminary meeting which has to do strictly with the scoping of the cobblestone subdivision. We have issued a positive declaration and this meeting is to help us to determine what it is that we're looking for before the developer moves along. Drew Riley ran the last meeting for us and again Drew if you'd like to take over.
Thank you very much. As you know, you've said very well, you listed a positive deck, we're going to the applicant has to do an environmental impact statement. We did have a, the start-up process, the applicant submitted a draft scope, which says, this is what we're going to study, how we're going to study it, what alternatives, what mitigations we're looking at. We had a public scoping meeting on December 3rd. We received a lot of comments that night, we got a lot of letters in the mail. So what I've done, I've scoped what I put, what we got comment-wise and issued a draft of a final story for you because we're going to talk, we're going to walk our way through that document tonight and talk about those things we're going to have studied. It's a, not a required step under the environmental impact statement, but it's a good thing to do. The applicant wants to know, what are we studying, how are we studying it? It also gives you an idea of pointing them in the right direction, what things you're going to be reviewing in this study. Are there some residents here tonight? I have extra copies if you want to follow along. Now if you want to start here. If someone wants to help you, you can hand out, I've got about eight or nine copies in there, there are two sheets, I'll hand them out. Thank you very much for your help. Okay, gentlemen, you have it in front of you and I will, and others will try to take notes on that and see if we captured a lot of things that were brought up in the meeting the other night, some of the comments you made. Remember, it's your decision and there's some difficult decisions in here because one of the decisions are, well, we're not going to study that, and some of the decisions are, no, there's more things to discuss. Okay, first of all, I want to walk through real quick to put a framework on it. What are the potentially significant environmental impacts? From all the things we've heard over the last, over the last, longer than I've been dealing for the last couple of months, you've been dealing for the last year, the first thing is impact on surface water. And the reason why this is a potential impact is because your, the project is being developed in a floodplain, you're changing grader patterns in the site, increasing the amount of pervious surface, you're doing significant grading and filling of the site that adversely impact the overall drainage of the area and downstream, and the project may impact the town sewer system. They relate to surface water. People have asked me, why does sewers impact surface water? Well, that's where it ends up eventually, goes to the wastewater treatment plant, then it goes into, into our lake streams or creeks or whatever, wherever your discharge is, so it's, it's under surface water. So I believe I captured the issues, the drainage and we have concerns about sewer. Next one was transportation and public safety. I put them together because it's somewhat connected. The project will add traffic to the surrounding roads and may significantly exacerbate, exacerbate parking and traffic issues around Eric Road Elementary School. We heard that from the school, one from the public. Project will add to the number of residents serviced by emergency vehicles and may significantly change and make problems with traffic issues in the area. You're going to have more emergency vehicles. The new road and the cluster, there was worry that the cluster will have less ability to park cars in driveways, so there'll be more cars parked on the street and the ability of the fire department, thank you, the fire department sent me a letter, of being able to get equipment in there. Even though the road will be designed as town standards, there's worry about additional parking on the road. The other problem was directly related to public health was the issue of that there's going to have to be retention pond. Remember, retention pond holds water and that standing water may attract insects such as mosquitoes and cross things like that. This is a common thing brought up in those, we want them to address that. Again, we're dealing with right now just what the potentially significant adverse impacts are, we'll talk about, more about these in a second. Aesthetic, we brought up aesthetic, that one of the aesthetic problems was we're raising the site, that would adversely affect the views in the area and, and basically we're taking a site that's now presently vacant, has some trees on it, and then we're changing, changing that view of that property, eliminating green space and views of other green space. So those were the aesthetic issues. Then there was impact to land and these were the positive deck things that you did. The project will be built over an extended period of time. Whenever you have a larger subdivision, those impacts can go on for a longer period of time because the construction occurs over a longer period of time and you're building more buildings and paid services on vacant land, so you're impacting land. So those are the big, big picture impacts. Now, there are a lot of other impacts we're going to talk about. So the next section of your scoping document is what, I can stop you, I'm just going to walk our way through that. What information do you want in this? The quality, what information do you want in your draft environmental impact?
Let me go back to the number four, impact on, on the land. A resident actually came to me within the last week or so and suggested that there are issues or concerns with the quality of soil that it may not properly compact. I think that, I think that was the issue.
I will add that to list, the potential impact on land. Is there worry about poor soils being used on the site for fill and other things that those soils should be looked at? Thank you. Okay, so what are we going to ask them to collect? You always in an impact statement want an environmental setting. You want to know what the site consists of. It's also a way for the developer, in some instances, trying to prove why there's not these impacts that you may have called about. So for the environmental setting, we want the NAD documentation, the typical environmental setting related to all these things, but we also, residents were concerned about, we're going to talk about this issue later, about the ecological conditions of the site, wildlife, wetlands, vegetation. So we want a more accurate understanding of what that site consists of from an ecological standpoint. So that's something new that we wanted to add that information in there. It may not lead to a specific impact, but we want to have more information on that, on those conditions. We want an expanded drainage report and the next, I think, as you can see here, about six bullets deal with drainage. And I'll try to put a synopsis together. We want an expanded drainage report, not the report that was submitted before. We want how those discharge locations will affect surrounding properties, how it will impact the school property. We want additional information on the existing drainage issues around the site and downstream of the site. They want us to work with the town engineer to make sure and view all those areas around the site, not just deal with specific issues. So we're expanding the extent of the drainage report, which we talked about in the next couple of bullets. So we're expanding the drainage report, that great additional detail on existing conditions. What do we need for that? A very good point was made is that part of this property, a lot of this property floods already, which in engineering terms means it already acts as a detention basin, so you're getting rid of all that or retention, so you're getting rid of all that, has that been taken into consideration in that drainage study? And they want to make sure that's quantified in the drainage study. The next one is, more expanding the drainage report, a larger analysis on a capacity of a hundred-year storm effect. We know that you design for differences between storm effects and you can talk to the town engineer on that, I won't step on anybody's toes on that, but we want them to look at what that hundred-year event's going to do in that analysis, especially with that pre-wetted condition where there's already flooding occurring in the area and on the site. We want to expand the drainage report to look at the entire watershed, given the proposed development of the property, so look at a larger area. And if we want to expand upon it a little more, I just said in a larger area, because specific areas you want included in that, obviously watershed could be, I don't know how big, Tim, the watershed is, it's a large watershed there. You might have picked certain areas of that watershed. Then we get out of drainage, well, I know drainage is a huge issue here. We have looking at the sewer, which is the I and I problems, not only just looking at the capacity of the system, but we know we have I and I problems throughout western New York, in the town of Eastover, et cetera, that's that water getting into the system. Now we're moving into traffic and transportation. We want them to look at line of sight requirements, we want background information and evaluation of the parking problems that are around the school, so the transportation place can include those if when you have event parking, we'll look at that event parking and what those problems can, can raise. We want them to redo the traffic transportation analysis, assuming the worst-case scenario, which is regular occupancy and building. We're not going to say it's just going to be seniors, let's just consider these all regular, single-family homes. Analysis should also look at additional traffic on Eric Road School during times of student drop-off, so they have to go out and do counts for when the drop-ups occur.
Drew, around the school, the parking, do they have any type of event? Those streets are dislodging, they have land behind them, but there's a couple of times I've heard people ask about why can't they park back there, I guess they don't, they don't have the, it's not accessible?
Hold, hold that thought, write it down right now, and under mitigation, we could ask them to look at that as a mitigation. So that's a good issue, but we're going to add that to the mitigation section, which is, okay, if we're going to have them, great question, you're going to have them study, always think about, you're going to have them study something, what are the results going to be and what things should they look at? We know it's a problem, one of the things they should look at in solving that problem. So solving that problem, they'll be providing additional parking in the area. And of course, they're going to, they're going to try to work with somebody on that because they're not going to want to pay for all that, but they may say, hey, can we solve this problem? So when we get the mitigation, make sure we include that. We also want them to study the intersection of Eric Road and Niagara Falls Boulevard, not only the entrance points, but go all the way down to Niagara Falls Boulevard. I did speak to Ed Rukowski at the DOT today, obviously the DOT would, would also want to make sure that that study is to their standards and that they review that study. And obviously, that intersection is under control, the DOT. Yes, sir.
Doug?
I just have one question with that in regards to the negative secret for this subdivision.
Right.
Is the, is the whole process, what's going on in that neighborhood, considered? Now, there's a big subdivision going in, I don't even know the name of it.
Mark Shaw?
Mark Shaw. Okay, that's only one little road right now, but there's a huge, if you look at the final there, there's probably going to be a hundred homes back there or something. I seen a drawing. It's, it's a mammoth subdivision, that's also going to be dumping out there. I think the town needs to look at it as a, as a plan. If you look at individual subdivisions, it may fit that it works, but if you take the overall, everything dumping out there, what's all happening at that, at Eric Road and the Boulevard? I think it's a crazy number.
Is that related to, just related, your concerns, traffic or all drainage?
It's traffic and drainage and everything, but I'm just wondering, how does the town approach that? Do they approach it as a group thing? I don't want to, it can't be all, everything is a subdivision, but it's.
Actually, there's a required component of the DEIS that looks at cumulative impacts. So what you're asking, and that's a good question for the town board, for traffic, is what other subdivisions, what other developments, future developments, like future phases of development, are they going to include in that traffic study? So let's include, and again, I'll work with the town board and others, I don't know them all, but if we can get the names of the subdivisions that have, obviously they're going to pick up the counts from existing, but you may have a subdivision that's still only 50% build-out, you need to add in that other development that's going to occur in there.
Right, because it's my understanding there's subdivisions approved that aren't even built yet, so, you know, if you do single like that, you can get a bunch of them approved and it turns out to be a cluster because, you know what I mean, they're planned on ahead of time.
So under the transportation study, we're going to ask them to get the information of the existing subdivisions in the area and add in any future growth from those. Typically in a TIS, the DOT asks for that anyway, they ask for five years, I forget where they ask for a five-year another build-out, but we're specifically call out, we should provide those, these are other subdivisions that have already been approved and they're going to be billed out of these over the next five years, we need to have those numbers in there. Okay?
Well, the future subdivision isn't that far from this one, shouldn't that be, drainage be included in that too?
Well, the drainage, yeah, I mean, if it directly impacts the subdivision, that's that watershed thing, if it's part of this watershed and it's influencing that watershed?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be like that. Okay, so we're looking at cumulative impacts under traffic and we'll take a look at drainage and just see if there's other areas that are going to affect this, that are already approved, that are being constructed, that are going to impact this. Okay. Good question, excellent question.
And then the area, Drew, the, on Eric Road, clean Eric Road and Sawyer Creek where Mark Shaw is, there was a 48-inch pipe, I don't think Paul Segments here, but they, there was one 48-inch pipe and I think the highway, when they did clean that section of Leaky Road, drainage through the Sawyer Creek, they added a second 48-inch culvert pipe. I guess, and I asked the other day when the town board was talking over some information on this, are those two 48's large enough? Why don't we, why don't we put a second one in because they had one, but I guess.
I don't have the answer to that, but I'm going to add it in, the drainage that they includes looking at those two culvert systems that exist, those are on air, okay? So we're going to add in, make sure that they include in the drainage study of looking at those culvert pipe systems that exist there instead of going from one to two. All right, where did I leave off here? I was going down, I got to traffic, I was talking about redoing the traffic study, analyzing what's going on at the school, also looking at the Niagara Falls Boulevard intersection and under the cumulative impact statement, we're going to add in those other subdivisions that have been approved but not built yet or the future phase of that, because obviously your traffic counts aren't going to improve that. Typically, they put a number in there for growth, I don't know what they did, you know, in this area they made it 1%, that number may be way too small because you already had these approved subdivisions, they're going to add in that traffic that's going to be in there. Next part of it is the visual analysis. We want to, we want to illustrate how those filled areas would be viewed from adjoining properties. We want cross-sections and visualization from the surroundings, what is that, that's going to look like? We realize it has a drainage impact, but it also has a visual impact. And the last thing under general, kind of what information they're included, we want information on the construction practices, hours of operation, construction routes, phasing features, dust control, all those things, we want more analysis. Because anytime you have a project that goes over a year, people always ask me in the secret law and the, in the EAF, why do they ask for, you know, multi-phase projects? Because they tend to make, make some of those construction problems worse. I mean, everybody can, everybody can handle construction for a certain, certain time period, but if it goes on for years and years, it, it makes those problems worse. Okay, some of the important parts of this scoping document are going to be the alternatives and what mitigations we're going to ask for, because people have been talking about, you know, these are problems we know that, that exist and are going to be worse, what things we want to look at. So I'm going to just list some of the mitigation measures we're going to be looking at, and drainage control structures and potential green drainage solutions. In today's world, we're always going to look at green, green drainage solutions. Those are, you know, bio-retention swells, things like that, other creative things. When I worked in Jersey, it was, they tried to infiltrate a lot of the water back into the ground, you know, what, what are you doing to try to make this more sustainable? Other drainage improvements in the area, potentially downstream of the site, we're talking about downstream improvements in the area.
You never mentioned upstream. Is there a reason that we never look at upstream or are we?
We know it's coming from upstream.
But, but in building this, we could, couldn't we hinder upstream?
Maybe it's because, and, and I'm going to not take, I take my hat off as an engineer, but just saying, we know they're going to affect downstream. I mean, so we, we look at downstream. Upstream, they really can't do much about, they have to handle what's coming from upstream onto the site. I can't go in and tell them to fix upstream problems, they don't fix downstream problems because they're going to have to take that. Typically, what we look at, the drainage study will look at the overall watershed, but from a mitigation standpoint, they're going to look at downstream. Very rarely do they look at upstream improvements.
Well, we can't let them block drainage from upstream, is that what affects it?
Right, and I see most of the improvement's being done downstream.
But they still have to account for upstream.
They have to account for all the upstream, yep. And something was brought up earlier at the last meeting too, I want to make sure I captured that. There was an issue of a ditch in the area being filled in or moved, so we want to make sure that they're looking at that ditch that was removed or filled in and then a potential putting that back or making it, did it make it worse, did it make it better? They need to look at that. I don't know if they made it worse or made it better and how that ditch got moved or filled in. We want to eliminate development on areas where the water currently ponds during, during storm events, that could be a mitigation. Supervisor also brought up, and we'll put that under mitigation, but also under alternatives, is that maybe they could relocate the pond, right? Is there a better location for that pond on the property if they have to have it? And you talk about potentially the lower point of the pond and shifting the subdivision to the back. So include that as a potential mitigation, but also as one of the alternative layouts that we're going to look at. Okay, incorporate additional stormwater management infrastructure to address drainage flooding problems, that's just any other infrastructure they need to add. If it was brought up by the public, can we route the site drainage off at a different location though? They have to go at that spot. I don't know. I mean, we all talk about that, that stream that runs through there, that seems to be where most of the water goes in that area, is there a different discharge point for that? I don't know the answer to that. Potential mitigation, okay, now we're moving into traffic. Potential mitigations to controlling traffic safety impacts around the school. These are, again, mitigations. Is there anything else from a mitigation standpoint? I think we talked about, I don't know why I didn't make it here, it's in a big category, is lights. We talked about potentially looking at a light at its entrance on Eric and also could they do something out at Eric and Niagara Falls Boulevard? Were there other specific issues?
You have to add, potential parking.
Okay. That later on, just make sure.
Yeah, one of the board members also suggested that we might be able to move the entrance to the subdivision farther up the road, exchange lots, which would take the entrance away from the school.
All right, move entrance, lights at the intersections.
We're not saying do it, we're saying it's something we should look at.
And parking, parking, other parking solutions for when they have events. Okay, one of the things brought up for sanitary sewer, routing the sanitary sewer to Ward Road instead of Eric Road, and then the other mitigations are upgrades and I and I mitigation to the sewer system. Standard things going on western New York, a lot of I and I work is being done, have to get rid of that groundwater going into the system. Then you talk about evaluation of changing the grading to reduce impacts to surrounding properties. People are saying, well, we're the property, can't, can't, why do you have to fill it so much? Is there ways you can do that? Or can you offer other mitigations to reduce the visual effects of this grade? I don't talk about the drainage, but talk about the visual, can you do something else to avoid that? Move some of the houses, pull it back a little bit? How can you, how can you, how can you fix that, that problem that you're creating? Here's the one, providing additional means of ingress and egress into the site. The fire department was asked that, we wanted to evaluate adding a different, different egress. I had the other one, we talked about a little earlier, moving the location into the, into the facility and also looking at secondary means of egress. Installation of traffic control devices, signals, et cetera, construction routes, and I forgot to add the one we talked about at the meeting, the traffic, what was one brought up, you guys just brought up recently about the traffic? It's signals, we had moving the location, we had, I think we had, oh, the restriction on parking on the road. Could they, even though these are parking, they say they're private roads, could we restrict parking to one side of the road or wherever, put up signs that could be enforced? Again, the issue is enforceability, so parking on one side of the road, that helps with the fire department's worry, even though it's a standard-sized road, we've seen it all over places, that if you have parties and whatever and there's cars parked on both sides of the road with a new type of fire equipment that out there, you can't fit the fire truck down the road. We actually had something in my subdivision a couple of years ago, we'd actually had to run it down the street and get people to move their cars, they couldn't fit the fire truck down the street. That was a standard-sized road. It's just difficult with these larger pieces of equipment. Okay, the next section of this, and I'm going through this quick, we'll go back and make sure we've got all those. Remind me of the alternative one, we're in there alternative, you have to look at the no-action alternative. We talked about developing under the existing zoning with no clustering, why, you know, show us why, you know, how, how you can develop this without clustering. And then there's the alternative layout, the number of units minimizing other impacts. So if you, if you evaluate correctly in an EIS, you're saying, okay, I can't fit this many units, if this adds this problem, I need to reduce the, the units or change the layout because of X, Y, and Z reasons. I don't know what those are going to be, but hopefully if it's done correctly, they're evaluating why that, that subdivision needs to be changed to reduce those impacts to... And what was the other one, I already, I just had, I told you, remind me.
Parking behind the school.
Parking behind the school. So that's in a layout, but we'll also talk about parking, parking lot or other solutions to the parking problem. Now, they're going to, they're going to look at that and they're going to argue, I mean, I won't speak for them, but they're going to argue, why do I have to make those improvements? But at least we'll have the study saying, are there ways of fixing this problem? All right, the standard stuff I'm not going to go through, what's going to be included in the tendencies. The important point here is to talk about what was brought up and we're not going to ask them to study that. It's a decision you have to make. I suggested a couple of things, but it's your decision. And there was a question about doing an in-depth wildlife study on the site, a multi-year wildlife study. Right now, you complain, but I recommend if you don't need to do that, I am asking them to evaluate and we can always address that issue in the FBI. If something comes back, they tell us there's hundred-year-old trees or some habitat or whatever on that site, we'll have someone review that, then we could always say, no, you now you need to do something. Right now, I have not asked them to do a, it's up to you guys, I'm not asking them to do a multi-year wildlife study. And why? Because there are no threatened or dangerous species, the site really doesn't have any unique habitats to, at least what we know now, well, it's seen on the maps, but we're going to ask them to provide some more information. Other big one that was brought up, this is a difficult one for the town, the town's been dealing with this issue for a couple of years now, is we're not asking them to do analysis of agricultural impacts. The site is located, is not located in a state that has an agricultural district, that property is being developed in accordance with the zoning and the conference plan, it's not an area that was called out for as, I mean, if we try to take every property. So we're not thinking that there's going to be any value doing agricultural analysis on that. And then the third one is the issue, and again, you can, I tend to, the property value issue. If this was a rezoning, I, I tend to try to bring in property value issues sometimes, but in a different way. Very difficult to ask straightforward, what are the impacts of this property as it relates, as it's a project as it relates to property values. I'll give you a section of the handbook, and when I teach it and deal with the guys and all, they say it's a very slippery slope when you start talking about property values. I haven't asked for a property value valuation. Again, if it's done right, it should reduce the impact and not have that impact, it's not an environmental issue. Those are the things, those are the difficult things, I always get in trouble with, but you have to, if they were brought up, I either have to study them or I have to say why I'm not studying them. Did I miss some things? Are there questions now? We brought up a few things, it sounds like I have about five or six things that even while going through this, I brought up that we can add in here. Poor soils was a new one, there's a couple other issues I think are very good issues.
Did you take into account, Drew, in, in this draft?
Yep.
All of the points that the residents had brought up over the last few weeks?
Right, a lot of them were, and even I've, I got letters from the fire department, I got letters from Justin, I got letters from other people, and I tried to incorporate them all, I gave you a five-page kind of synopsis, I tried not to, but I tried to put them together and say, okay, are we addressing those issues?
Soil analysis, does water table come into play?
I think that's something that, and that's a good, I'll clarify that on the drainage study, I think in the drainage study, they, that's a part of that existing conditions that if it's high groundwater, obviously it impacts their pond, I think they took it into consideration, but I think there's some worries about how that groundwater.
Because there is wetland bordering.
Right, oh yeah, I'm sure. Most of Wheatfield has high, what is the groundwater here? Probably in the EAF, it's probably at seasonal high water tables at foot or, or at surface. I mean, most of Wheatfield is, is high water tables. But I'll add that in just to make sure they understand. Now, one of the things we discussed, might as well bring it up right now, because we brought up, I think the biggest issues are drainage and traffic. There's two ways to go about this. Standard way is you tell the applicant, you're going to study drainage and traffic and here's how you're going to study it, and we're going to come back with the studies. And then I would recommend you hire an independent consultant, an engineer independent of the town that you can hire to review that drainage study. They could even ask for a model and rerun the model, same thing with the traffic. You can do it that way, and then what, how that's done is, then the FBI has to represent your opinion, your independent engineer then puts his or hers thoughts in that FBI, why he disagrees or agrees with, or how he would change this. And then you can do it that way. That's the typical way. The other way you talked about doing, and I've seen it done, is that you're talking about, instead of, you're going to tell the applicant, these are all things you're going to study, but we're going to independently hire someone right in the DEIS and do those sections of the DEIS. It's somewhat different, but I've seen it done. The power of the secret law says that you can have it done, you can have the developer have it done, so there are pluses and minuses of either way. You can have them do it and hire your independent person to say, okay, I'm going to review it, make changes. It's how we've done a lot of the Walmart. The Walmart would come in with their, their representatives through their traffic studies and drainage studies, then we would make the town hire an independent person, they would turn over the models, they would rerun the models, re-do that, and then they would put their answers in the FBI and then weigh those two and made their decision based upon those, those two presentations. Or, or I see it done the other way. So that's a decision you guys can make.
You said, not, two things, uh, traffic and drainage, the third thing is the height. So if, at the height of the subdivision, how high it is?
Yep.
So if they were to lower it, and he, would it affect some of our, uh, water lines or sewer lines, where they, instead of putting in maybe gravity sewers, maybe they have to do grinders? Is this gonna be...
Right, obviously, there's gotta be some communication going there, because if you're, if you're just independently looking at drainage and visual, all those things affect, and there's the issues of, if you lower the site to a certain level, you're gonna have to put a pump station in. Well, is that, is that a good mitigation in the town once with the pump station? That's fine, you know, but all those things have to be weighed. And that's the good part about the process, is it's, it's not like you're gonna get the DEIS and you're stuck with it. I mean, if other issues come up during, I see it happen all the time, you get information in the DEIS that says, geez, there's additional problems being created by what we're trying to mitigate here. You can either address those in a, in an FBI, or you can ask for a supplemental if these new issues came up. It doesn't mean that, jeez, I'm all done. I got this DEIS, and this is all I asked for, and now something else come up. You can always address it in the FBI, or you can ask for a supplemental. If it's, if it's a large enough impact that's been brought up by this information you asked for, you could also ask for a supplemental. Um, so, those are difficult issues, because you're right, the minute you start looking at all these changes, these mitigation, go lower it, do this, you're gonna create other environmental impacts. And which ones, which one do you think is better? You're always gonna have impacts, but which, which one is best for the town? You know, like I said, we rate, lowering the site's gonna probably require a pump station. Town may not mind. A lot of towns don't like pump stations. I know I worked for some towns that say, absolutely not, Drew, we do not want any more pump stations, that's out of the question, we want this, this alternative looked at. So those are the things that are gonna come up, and that's when the harder part comes. Hopefully, if they've done the DEIS correctly, and you get a lot of information, it's gonna bring up other questions and issues, just as the first one did. Not this easy deal, that you're gonna get this and everything's gonna be perfect. That's the harder part, is then taking that, and you're gonna get input from agencies too. D or T is gonna say, we don't agree with this, we don't think there should be a traffic light there, or whatever. You're gonna have those different agencies going. So it doesn't get any easier after this, gentlemen, this is the first step, but it's harder as you get more and more information. It's just, are we getting enough information? That's what's here tonight, that's what scoping is about. Are we getting enough information for you to start putting those, your decision? Remember, you're working towards a decision here. That's the end product, is the decision. All right, other issues, I, I, I caught your one, drainage issue. I think we need to, and I'm gonna have to quickly address something else, really articulate well what's gotta be done in this drainage study. Whether you hire someone on your own, or they do it and we review it, I think that one's gonna be well constructive, actually what they're studying. We're not accepting the same drainage report they submitted. I think they understand that, whether it's them or, or, or an independent person, it is a much more complicated issue here, and we're gonna have to articulate that very well. Tried to bring up, without telling them how to do it, these are the things that are concerned. And hopefully I got all those issues as well. It, it can be worked on. I didn't wanna finalize it till I got your input, and I got some good input tonight.
We sat here two weeks ago, and we heard about sidewalks.
Yep.
Is that a, is that something that we should mention at this point? You've got a twenty-four foot road with two gutters, people, pedestrians walking?
Yep, that's an issue you could look at. Obviously...
Obviously, we'd have to do it...
Pedestrian safety in a private road subdivision is always an issue of concern, because typically, when someone puts in a private road, they don't put in sidewalks, they expect people to walk on the road. I don't know, what's proposed here? They, they're not proposing sidewalks?
No.
Okay. Do you want them to look at pedestrian, we can just call it pedestrian safety. You know, how are you gonna accommodate pedestrians with them?
Don't have sidewalks anyway.
There's no place for them to go, outside, is it? But at least they can walk around in the subdivision.
Down below is just, a lumpy drive, I should say, it's just, uh, pretty black.
Well, that's, that's how, that's how it's been over the years, there's really no place to walk, other than, if you're gonna build sidewalks, they're gonna be just within a subdivision, because then you don't want people walking out on Eric Road.
Yes, and they'll be safe, and we'll just get knocked over again.
Yep. Any other questions? Good question about sidewalks, you're right.
I guess you could put an upright curb on one side and put a, the sidewalk right behind, right behind the curb.
This wouldn't be an existing...
The other direction for me, because I'm gonna have the tough task of taking a lot of what we talked about tonight, finalizing that draft and getting to you, I think the idea we talked about was, obviously, there's enough information now for the applicant to proceed with beginning that DEIS, but you wanna finalize that and make some of those decisions about what they're doing and what you may wanna do, if you wanna do that now. So I'm gonna have to put some more of that information in there.
Okay, uh, we'll start with board members, is there anything we might have overlooked, or anything you'd like to add?
So basically, you're saying, we can, we can tell them at a later time, we want an independent engineer to look at the drainage?
Well, right now, right...
And we can specify, or do we need to say it now?
If you're gonna ask for it now, if you want an independent person to do it now, I'd like to do that in the scoping document. The, the, the general practice is, you're, you're gonna submit all this stuff, and you're gonna hire, if you wanna hire an independent person, you can do that, the secret law. Matter of fact, the secret law encourages you to go out and hire experts. It tells you, you are not experts in these things, and you need to hire those experts. And we said to the beginning that you wanted independent people doing those two, those two things. I just need to know now, if, if you're gonna do it now, I need to tell them in the scope, don't bother studying these two things, because we're gonna do it now, we're gonna independently do it.
I think that's pretty clear that we have to do that, for at least those, at least the driving, the traffic, and at least the drainage issue. We've gotta take a look at a bigger issue than justice development.
Definitely, oh yeah, whether they do it, or we do it, or, or an independent, they gotta look at a bigger picture. We, we brought up a whole bunch of issues. As I said before, the neighbors know the issues on the property, we've tried to articulate all those issues in the area, and now we have to get a drainage study that hopefully addresses those issues.
Board members, anything?
So, so the residents, when is your next board meeting?
January sixth, January fifth. Monday, the fifth would be our next actual board meeting, and it's gonna be a busy night.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, again, I'm gonna get you, hopefully, in the next few days, and it will be available to the public, I'm gonna try to take what I heard tonight, and when I started already, do a little better job articulating that and getting to you, and with the resolution to accept this as the final, you can make changes to it.
Before we break at this point, can we listen to the residents?
Drew, I have one, one question, before we do a final, one, shouldn't at some point we get a, a, the revised plans that he, that we've been told about?
Well, I...
Or are we gonna be redoing this again?
And, and, tell me if I'm wrong here, I'm understanding is that they submitted a plan, that plan exists now, we've heard rumors that they're changing it. You positive decked it on the plan that was submitted. I'm assuming, I'm hoping, that through this impact statement process, and in the DEIS, they're gonna come in with modified plans, hopefully addressing, hopefully addressing those environmental impacts. So I'm hoping that the new plans are gonna come in, or as an alternative, to say, based upon all this, we're changing the plan, because this will reduce the environmental impact. So, right now, you positive decked it based upon the only plan that's before you. I can't posit, we positive decked it on that plan, not on some future plan that they're gonna change. We're hoping that they're gonna change, we're hoping that, you know, through this, the process, it's either they're gonna come up with a plan that has mitigated to the maximum extent practical, or at the end of this process, you're gonna make a decision that the project is not approvable. You're gonna make a, you're gonna make a negative findings, basically. If you don't believe that they've mitigated the maximum extent practical, the only thing you can do is issue a negative finding. I love that. The secret law at the beginning is positive and negative, and at the end it's positive and negative, but they're the exact opposites. A positive deck at the beginning is, is, it's a bad project, and you can't move forward till you do an impact. When you get to the end, a positive finding is a good result, you can move forward, and a negative finding means you can't. So it confuses a lot of people that both ends of the process is two different things. So yes, at the end of this process, you gotta make a decision, positive findings or negative findings.
Okay, Doug?
You hit part of my question. He had come up with a revised plan, throughout this whole thing, I'm on the north side.
Right.
Um, the tree line, he said, was no problem leaving the tree line, it's like a sheer in the middle. He agreed to leave the tree line, and he moved the houses off the property line a little bit. Now, is, my assumption is that that's all okay now, still? Or, or we started from square one? It sounds like it's bad.
We're, we're not, we're not starting from square one, we're, I mean, if he's talked about that, Drew, I'm assuming he's gonna do that.
I mean, he agreed, he said he didn't have no issues, but, you know, forcing the secret may have a change of tone here.
Right, and, and you're right, he's, he's gonna be balancing all these issues. Unfortunately, one of his things may say, well, jeez, I'm gonna push it more that way to solve this problem, and take all out your tree line, you know?
Well, I own have the tree line, that's, that's my problem. Once the bulldozer hits, we all know, it only takes one day to level it, and if I'm working, it's gone.
I just added to my, I just added to my notes, one of the things in the layout is preservation of much of, there are trees, like on tree lines throughout, preservation of most of the tree line should be important for them.
Yeah, because the property line's in the middle of it.
Right.
And you know yourself, construction guys ain't gonna know...
Nope.
That half of those trees are mine. So, that's, that's been my question since day one, is the tree line gonna exist? He didn't have a problem leaving it?
Yep.
I just don't know whether this is the place to ask that question?
Nope.
Or is it somewhere...
Ask away. And it's a, it's a good thing that, I don't know, I've not seen that new plan, we can only act on the plans that are for us, but I'm assuming through this process, he is gonna create a plan that, if we behoove him to address his big questions about the residents, and I, I know at the end of this, no one's, everybody's not gonna come back and say, hey, this is great, um, but have they done enough?
He had taken a couple houses out of the subdivision to move it away from the line.
But he also, uh, if I remember, if I remember right, there's nothing on the plans that said that, that that's strictly so far in agreement between the two of you.
Right, it, it was said at a meeting.
It was said at a meeting, right. But it's, if, we have to make sure that that ends up, we have to make sure that ends up on the plans.
Right, if, if, for example, if he comes back that that's one of his, that he's gonna preserve those tree lines and whatever, we would ask for a tool, how do you accomplish that? Real nice saying, I'm gonna preserve something, but how are you gonna do it? Is, are you gonna have conservation easements in the name of the town? Are there gonna be deed restrictions? Are there gonna be something? Who's gonna enforce that? Because I've seen it all the times where they go, whoops, I'm sorry, I forgot to tell the contractor, well, I'll plant a couple two and a half inch trees there, and, and everybody will be happy.
Yeah.
I've seen that happen too many times. So there's gotta be a tool in place to make sure that that happens then.
I have a few clarifications that I might suggest. Um, when it was indicated that as you get further information, you may have to do a, you may have to include that information of those issues in a final environmental impact statement or supplemental. Um, when you get to DEIS, it's up to you to accept what, whether or not to accept it as complete. So before you even get to an FBI, or deciding whether a supplemental impact statement needs to be done, you can always make the decision that you don't think that the DEIS is complete, and go back to the applicant and say, this is the area that we don't think is complete, and you have to, you know, boast of these, or give us further information on these issues. Because when you get into a supplemental environmental impact statement, that's a whole other process. And if you make significant changes in the final environmental impact statement, you're gonna be, um, probably, uh, violating certain requirements, because in a final, there's, after a final, there's no requirement of a public hearing, and the court of appeals has said, you can't make major changes in a final environmental impact statement because of it. The, the second point I'd like to make is that, if, you should know that if you hire someone to do these issues independently, you can charge the cost to the applicant. This is not a cost you present, that you have to undertake or undergo in the EIS process. Um, and then the third issue, uh, dealing with cumulative impacts, it was indicated that any approved project would be included to review for cumulative effects. But it's not just approved projects that the secret requires, it's any project that's in the pipeline. In other words, if it's under consideration, but not yet approved, that still has to be, that project and its effects still have to be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the floor? Joe?
Just, Drew, I think you did a really nice job of putting all, putting a list together. Um, I just wanna clarify, so, you know, we've talked about how there's that area of what we call retention, that will, the effect in that area will be studied, right?
Right, yep.
Because I know you guys were saying you wanted to know exactly what area we were talking about, and I didn't see any description of exactly that area, but...
That's the description. Do you, do you have a description of it, something you wanna sketch on the back?
I could, I'd be more than happy to email you something if you wanted.
Thanks, I'll give you my card, if you want to email me that. I have a general starting point to say this is a general area.
Yeah, it sounded like you did, and I think you...
I just said, in general, that area, I don't know the effect.
Yeah, okay. Um, then, uh, Mark, I'm hoping you guys, if you got anything, something on this other runoff issues that go around, so you can... So I, I don't know, did you write a letter?
I did not.
I was just, I was counting on you to articulate those points that you brought up. The, uh, as far as the height, you know, that, that's a, a big issue, I think we're all aware of. I, I think some of it's driven by, you know, come in possession of this soil survey document, um, you know, that talks about, and, and in here, basically, it does document that the, what you call the groundwater level is, then you work from six to twelve inches in that area, you know, maybe if you get a really hot summer or something like that, it's gonna dry out, so if you do your study, you pick a good time of year to do your study, it might be lower than that. But, but I think, just, just in the spirit of, of being constructive and mitigation, um, I think the reason they're raising it six to eight feet, one of the reasons they want a basement, right? So if you got rid of the basement, then you probably wouldn't have to raise it as high. Um, just thought, that's not something I claim to have expertise in, but, um, I, I would imagine that if the water table is that high, and you wanted to have a basement, you'd have to pull up pretty high to create space for it. Um, then...
Just, just a note on the soil conditions, what we'll do is ask them, I just made a note, um, they can do it any time of year, pretty much, but what they look for is that there's a modeling in the soil that tells you where the groundwater is, it comes up to, so we'll just ask them, not if they do it in the middle of summer, or whatever, we can tell where the groundwater is.
You know, some of these things I say, I know you guys think I come up with all this on my own, a lot of people approach me, and, and they're, they don't like to talk publicly, so, so I was given an hour dissertation on the value of this book, okay? So if anybody, you know, would like me to share this with them, I'd be more than happy to do it, it's not my book. But I understand the points that are being made, and I think they're very, very legitimate, very basic points, that should be taken into account relative to groundwater. The concern is, is that, you know, this person's saying that a very professional, unbiased engineering firm did this in the seventies or so, and that we should build off of it, not, not ignore it, or drag create our own.
That's the norm of gospel still, they use that book.
Right, so, just...
The old guys use that book, right?
So, and then, I think Larry was articulating that, Congressman Hallow was articulating that, really, the, the worst case isn't just during pickup and drop off, it's during these, uh, you know, scheduled events, that, you know, whether it's Halloween, Christmas, open house, parent teacher conferences, there's, you know, graduations, you know, Halloween parade, it, it's constant, and, you know, sometimes people would say, oh, that only happens once or twice a year. No, it's a lot more, they have what those, uh, the, the, the books, we live right across the street, so we see it all.
That's what happens when you get parents involved.
Yeah, so, you know, we'd like to make sure that's taken into account as well, because that's when you're gonna start putting people in the rough, and, and having a problem, right?
There was actually just, uh, a winter chorus concert the other day, which is only third, fourth, and fifth grade, and you couldn't even get a regular sized car out of the little streets. People were weaving in and out, trying to get around. It was terrible. And there was only three grades of parents. And that, it is in the works. So, and it was downstream, I mean, it was crazy. And if there was ever an emergency, there is no way.
Okay, and then, I, I think you talked about the visualization, and I don't know if that will capture, you know, and, and the thing I provided, I pointed out that the current road relative to the existing property, there's a significant rise there. And we consider that the residents consider that a significant issue and a significant adverse effect, effect to the environment. I don't know, will that, will that be covered in there too somewhere?
I'll have them cut the elevation all the way through so they can see how the road is and how the, how the area is. So, I just added to that, you know, the visualization, the light cycle that we threw from the road all the way through the backyard and into the race there is and into the joint home.
And then, on the public safety side of things, I know you got the letter from the fire department. Is that, is that called out in there as something to?
Yeah, I think I, and as your fire department, I, I, the issues I got from the fire department were the issues of parking on the road and the, and being able to get equipment in there. The issue of a secondary means of egress, they wanted a secondary means of egress, and another here. And was there another issue? I think it was, those were the biggest, or one other issue they brought up.
Snow, snow removal in a timely fashion?
Yeah, they're wor, right. They're worried about, you know, private subdivision that, that, that their plowing occurring and so they can get in and out. So, that's a difficult one to address. I'll try to, the, I'll just ask on the foot end how there's no removal contracts are gonna work, but understand, difficult issue to enforce, but are they going to, how are they removing snow on a daily basis? Is their contract gonna be with, how are they gonna make sure that fire department can get it?
And then, from the, the school system, the, I know you, you got in there with the traffic thing, and that's from, but I would, I would really hope that, that we would interview or at least have some direct communication with the school system. I know in their letter, they pointed out the, the road that's traffic, already got it covered. But they're also concerned about flooding in that building, not, you know, it's not my yard that they're concerned, but the school. And I, and I hope we cover the school as well. That's what they pointed out in their letter.
And I can add to this quote, and I will do that, that they need to sit down with the school with the traffic drainage issue that they're talking about.
And then sewer, I know you got the, the note in there about sewer relative to drainage, but there are folks in the community who express concerns over sewer capacity. And again, I think that would be another one of those issues where you want those forward as well. And, you know, I, I'm not a sewer expert, so it's not, my own opinion I'm articulating, but they talked about this eight inch line, that the land there was never meant to be fed into that eight inch line, it was meant to feed into the bulkage line of more road. I couldn't make this up if, if I tried, okay? So, this is, this is something that someone, I believe, that really knows what they're talking about called me, and I just think that should be looked at as well. And then the agricultural significance, that was something that I had communicated. And the only, and maybe the plot I was looking at was wrong. It was something that came from, what is it, the town comprehensive plan that has a bunch of maps attached to it. And, you know, I believe the Longo folks provided it, and it very clearly states on there that it's prime farmland and, yes, agriculture. Farmland is state, a statewide importance. Again, I couldn't make this up if I tried, you know, so I'd be glad to share that with you.
Well, I'm, I'm very familiar with that document, yep. Yeah, but it wasn't, you know, good, good point. It was, we called out, most of the lands in most of western New York are state important or, or whatever, went drained, and that is went drained. But then the town established an area they thought was, was the most important, an agricultural protection area, and this area wasn't included yet. Good, better, indifferent, it wasn't included, cause it already had, had the zoning and changes. So, the, we, we accommodated that area as a future growth area. They disagree with it, but it was accommodated in the comprehensive plan and not as, we established much larger areas. Remember, the conservation, the green space committee has decided to even expand it a little further more to the east, but they're gonna make a recommendation to expand that agricultural protection area. And then the town has to do something about it, whether it's rezone property, and they've done an agricultural protection plan and do some other things. But this beach wasn't, it's the only reason, it was zoned, it wasn't in the plan. But good, better, indifferent, that's why I left it out that way.
Drew, just to follow up on what Joe said, if there was an emergency back in there, and you were, you were questioning if, if the, you know, subdivision didn't have their streets plowed, could the town highway, you know, say there was a, a fire emergency or any type of emergency, and emergency vehicles, cause it, the fire are still gonna go in there, you know, ambulance is, are still gonna go in there.
I actually, I actually call that in a subdivision.
Can a town highway plow go in if we're, we're called to assist? Are we, are we allowed to drive on that road?
You kinda do that with drainage systems now sometimes, where you have to get in an emergency, and then you just charge the, the development for it. And say, look, we're charging you, and you-
It's like we're doing eminent domain?
You have to issue upfront and say, look, we're gonna go in and plow the street, or you have an agreement upfront and get a, you have to form a district or something or other, and then talk to your legal counsel on how to do that. That could be a mitigation, that could be the mitigation they offer in book, that either in emergency cases, or do we want a contractor to put town now and we'll pay you yearly to maintain this road like a special district?
If we have to go in, just like we do with the county, if we plow county roads or state roads, you know, we have money that those, you know, they say pay us for plowing those. So, if we have to go in and do it, maybe-
Uh, well, I think it's some, it's a policy decision we'd have to talk about. I, I don't know that the town really would like to get into the business of plow, plowing private roads.
But if there's an emergency back there and you have to, if, if, you get an ambulance stuck in a ditch or something, you gotta go in there and-
You do what you need to do in an emergency.
Do what you need to do.
In an emergency situation, you would go in there and plow, and then I'd backcharge them.
Yeah, okay.
What you're saying is you should, you know, the plan's so bad.
I don't want the highway superintendent just stopping at the gates there and say, I'm not allowed to go in there.
Is there anything included as far as stormwater pollution?
Yeah, the, the new laws are very specific about quality. I remember years ago, it was just quantity, now it's quality. That's like the infrastructure thing, I'm telling you.
Still under the impression that they never did a full sweep, they only did a partial, they told they didn't need to do a full one by the end here. So, I didn't know anything was-
So, what I'm gonna do, they're, they have to fall under the current laws. The current laws are gonna be is the full sweep.
They do their full sweep as part of the-
Yeah, and it'll be if it's a change plan, they're gonna have to resemit it.
That's hard, it's a final.
I, I'm assuming-
A final plan? They've done a preliminary sweep.
They did a partial sweep.
But that's gonna change. I mean, I, the whole purpose is that the plan's gonna change.
Now, this, it's under, you have to understand, this, even if we approve this, if we approved it tonight, it's not the final design. This is only the SEACER part of it, the engineering part of it, and then it goes back to the designer to go back to the planning board. They would totally review everything again. Our fire company would review everything again. The building department would still review everything. And then eventually, it would come back to us to approve the subdivision as a cluster division, and we could refuse it at that point if we choose. This is a preliminary step, but just an important step.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but the stormwater pollution is definitely part of the environmental impact, which is purpose of SEACER. So, I'll make sure someone is out there.
Couple of questions regarding the agriculture thing that you said you recommended that the board doesn't get. What, I'm confused. What's the reason you recommend they don't get it though?
They're not in the state agricultural district. I know what the study's gonna come back saying. They're not in the state agricultural district. They're not called out from the comprehensive plan as an area for agricultural protection. They have a larger area in the town. And then, it's zoned not for agriculture, it's zoned for residential development. So, that's what the study's gonna come back and say. I'll tell you right now. And they're gonna say, it's inconsequential, but, but again, that's my recommendation to the board. If we were in the agricultural protection area, I'd be saying something different.
But didn't you say that there was talk, and I know it's down the line, but isn't the town already with the comprehensive test force and that, talking about maybe changing, Green Space Committee changing that?
And I've seen a draft of that report. I think most of the areas they're talking about, potentially, and the town board has made a decision, recommending expanding that, that area is to the east and not toward Niagara Boulevard, good, better, different, sort of, what they're recommending. And like I said, we still have some good soil, some state important soil, but it's all where drained. You guys live here. We talked about drainage. Drainage is the biggest problem. Farmer over there, drainage is the biggest problem in the town. You have good soil, but they have drainage problems, so you have to drain.
The land is farmed now.
Yeah, that's what I don't understand. To me, we're losing farmland if we put, it's farmed now.
And you're right.
Drew, it's been farmed for the last fifty years or more.
Tree property, and I'm talking about is thirty-two acres, which is completely farmed.
Yep.
I don't know if it's, it's only is R2 or whatever.
I was asking.
But it used to be agricultural, R2, so I, I don't know how it got to this point where now it's not agricultural at all. It's like when the whole thing is farmed. It has been farmed for sixty years.
And that's, and that's some of the things. I mean, what, I'll give you some advice. I'll tell you. As the town moves forward over the next couple of years, I hope you all get involved. We have some volunteers on our committee here, committees or whatever, that should all get involved in the future of the town. And your suggestion to make changes to the agricultural protection areas of town and things like that, you should get involved. This is why you do the plan. You say, the plan right now does not have this property as an agricultural protection area. That's what I'm falling back on. It's not an ag district, it's not in, it's not zoned agricultural. Make changes. You're gonna be doing that over the next couple of years. The town has great committees and volunteer committees working forward to move the town, town forward and say, where do we wanna go? Issues like this. We talked about, you know, coming up with new drainage requirements, coming up with new floodplain overlays and whatever. Those things, you, you need to move forward. So, those are the things that have to be brought up and say, where are we going in the town? This subdivision, I thank this subdivision for coming, for the fact it's brought up all these great issues that the town needs to think about over the next two years. So, I always say that with Walmart. Walmarts are great when they come to town, cause towns actually think about where they should put commercial development, cause it forces their hand on stuff. So, this is a great idea to figure out where you want agricultural protection, where you want future growth in the town. We did a build-out analysis of the town, which gave you a very good idea of where the town could develop. And I made a joke to the town board, welcome thirty thousand more residents, cause that's, that's what the build-out analysis said. Is that what the vision of the future of the town is? No, start making changes. That's what the build-out analysis says. What'll happen in the town, if you develop every square inch of property that supposedly developable in the town, you'd have thirty thousand more residents. That what you don't want? Make changes.
I have a question, Drew. No, Bob, I'm with your hour. Okay, so right now, you're looking more at drainage and, and you're saying, I, I went to the agricultural focus group competition the other night, and it was documented, but it is part of the Green Space recommendation. And you've been in the gated, and your friends don't have to do anything. We don't know if something is there that is precious or, or trapped. We don't know, because we have no studies.
Right, well, the town has, and I'm, I'm just correct. The town actually hired and has an independent consultant working on an agricultural protection plan.
I'm not talking about agriculture, I'm talking about green cities and the wildlife portion. You're saying that there's no need for an in-depth study, because there's no species that are threatened, there's no special habitat. But those species are threatened within the town, we feel.
And what we said in there, remember, what the conservation plan said, and newer part of that conservation plan, is those areas that we called out for, and this property has an area that was called out for potentially protecting, but they use a lot of different tools. And one of the tools that was highly recommended and is being worked on now is that they do cluster development to save part of the property. It doesn't save all the property. The other option is, if it's valuable enough land, they've given them tools to go in and purchase it or purchase development rights or do all those other things. I can't just arbitrarily go back now and say, well, because it's occurred. They took the one tool that was in the conservation and said, and do a cluster development. That's why they got to a cluster development, because we said, this has some lands that are important to save in the town. But I'm not, I'm not negating it. I'm just saying, that's what forced them to go to a cluster development.
This is a question, I was just kind of, thanks for filling here, it was a stock. So, when the town is going to choose yes or no with this subdivision, do we get another chance to talk about?
When is it public?
Cause this is really more about the drainage.
There's a whole bunch of steps. I mean, next step is a draft of environmental impact statement, something like that. And what's the first thing is the town has to decide, is it, is it ready for public review? Is it, did they do enough? Did they do all the things? They may reject it, but they know you didn't. And I get residents saying, well, I can't, I can't see that. Well, we reject it. Once it's accepted, you'll have a public hearing. You'll be able to look at that document for thirty to sixty days and give comment on it. And that's when I said, other issues may come up, where you may say, geez, you know, this brought the fact that you didn't, didn't study this well enough or the mitigations aren't good enough. So, there is steps to this. And then the FEIS and their findings, and then as they said, if they were to get a pos, a good result, a positive finding for the SEACER, they still have to get their, they have to do all the design and get subdivision approvals through the planning board. We have planning board members here, right? So, there's still a long, arduous process.
Do you still have, will the public still be given another chance, like when it gets, let's say, let's say they have all kinds of- Will the public still give a chance to?
When? At the DEIS, they can see, we're gonna have public hearings. At the FEIS, there's a period where it's available for comment. You can submit letters, but there's no public hearing on it. Then they make findings. And then to the subdivision, subdivision law, you guys have public hearings for subdivisions. They have public hearings for subdivisions. After that, that's about then they'll issue preliminary subdivision rule, then there's really no public involvement after that. It's really kind of the final plaque comes in and it's available if there's going to be a public, so those are the periods for public influence? That's what you're asking? Get to the back to town board.
Let's go back to Dan. You were, had your hand up before.
Um, yeah, first, I mean, I'd be able to get to, they have, well, my opinion, also my personal, three hundred and fifty feet. There's like my deal, Ward Road back in up to the property, but, I mean, I grew up there, and it's my back in the field. I still walk the dog back there a couple times. And it's, it's west back, especially towards Monkey Drive. I went to sixth grade at Eric Road School, and, you know, as a kid, you try to walk through the fields going home. I come home, I'll pull the mud, and I didn't like it. But this was, this was like in June, May. I don't see how water tables going down. In the back of my parents' property, it's, every year, it's, it's, it's retaining more and more water. So, there's, there's not a flow, there's not a natural flow going back to that, that ditch or that creek in the back. That's one of my concerns. Um, background on that. Weeks ago, I stayed and played hockey back there, back in nineteen seventy or something. So, I've been back there. I can't, I haven't seen any kind of improvement. Yep, that's one I'm thinking about. Also, on this, on this cowbell, is this the whole phase or more phases to this project? Is this, it's, what, the parcel that the, that the contractor owns, are they just using one phase, one part of it now and they own more of it?
This particular parcel, unless they were to buy more land, which is now owned by Mr. Sigmund, the, this would be the project. It is a cluster, it is a cluster development, so half of it would be saved.
So, there's, there's potential, which I see a lot of potential, the rest of it being developed, considering it's all residents around. I'm trying to bring that up.
But the only problem was that they didn't create any stub roads to connect any future, you know, development for future parcels. So, they're kinda, they've, they've landlocked themselves, because they just have one large cul-de-sac on one street out. So, to push themselves up to this property to the north, they don't have those entry or exits into it.
There are bigger properties out, Pierce Road and Ward Road, so, I mean, there's potential. I'm just, I'm just saying that.
Yeah, there, there is room on the other side of, of Mr. Sigmund's property as well. There are some areas of it.
There is no doubt, there are more lands available for development in town, so that's why we did the build-out analysis. We tried to analyze where developments could occur. There's a lot of areas to develop in the town. Does the town wanna change that?
Okay, and then, one more thing, considering this around the area. About seven, ten years ago, we built that property, Eric Road, behind, you know, and also, it's prime development property in the future. That, that water set will drain the same, same direction. There was a huge subdivision that found that the public actually, um, affects mine. Also, I was Secretary of the Weafel Drainage Committee, and I have some notes here. Back in August of twenty-ten, under one of our business discussions, point eight, you got the Pierce, Ward Road, Monkey Drive area, they don't want home, needed attention and cleaning. It was one of our recommendations to the board. March, go to, go to March twenty-eleven, we discussed flooding from the area of, Walk, Pierce Road, Ward, Ward Road, so much drive in the town. As far as I know, no machinery's been back there doing anything.
That whole area has been cleaned out, Dan, all the way from Pierce all the way to the creek, to Sawyer Creek.
Okay, um, April twenty-eleven, Eric Road School area, we talked to Gilbert. The school does get flooded out, parking lot gets flooded out. We did suggest putting a, another ditch to drain the water from there behind the lots, Eric Road, Sawyer Creek. But that wasn't really, Tim, Tim Walk was the, that really wasn't, wasn't gonna help, which I kinda agree with it. And back, and then July of twenty-eleven, we got the Monkey Drive tributary flooding Eric Road School, so, yeah. So, this has been an issue for a long time. I know they still have problems with the schools when the dust flood out. Um, I mean, Larry said you put two forty-eight inch culverts in now. You're draining this whole water system into Sawyer Creek. Has anybody ever seen Sawyer Creek actually flow? You're draining it into something that's not moving. And when a tunnel on a creek is tight, it's not gonna go anywhere. The water's just gonna back up.
That's right.
Um, so, you get no place to go with it. I mean, at least in, also on the, talk behind Monkey Drive, to me, it's retention, they spent a retention or detention town. I'm not sure what's the right term. Long as I lived there, there was some in the early sixties. Always been water laying there unless it's summertime. So, I don't know how you can build something in there unless you're gonna have a humongous detention time. And you have to be on Sigmund's property then. Okay? I don't think he wants it.
Careful what you wish for.
And also, I've been just taking notes, listening and reading, reading the papers, going along. Um, another, I have a question on the topsoil remover. I mean, one of these subdivision in the town, taken away six inches of good topsoil, I'm sure there's a good topsoil there. They're selling it off, and it's, it's lowering the, the height of the property. And you're gonna bring in what kind of fills to bring it up, what, four to six feet? I think the residents around there should have some, you know, that you're bringing back into it. Not, and also the homeowners that buy in the place. And, yeah.
That's part of the issue. The SEACER says, no dirt in, no dirt out.
Right.
Right? And that's part of the compassion issue? When they test the soil-
Right? And that's part of the, uh, compaction issue. When they test the soil, are they gonna test where they're gonna dig the pond? Or are they gonna test the soil that's up on the hill that's probably better dirt? Because that, what they're gonna dig is just slimy, slick.
Well, you, you'd probably wanna test compaction and throughout, throughout the site. Yeah, I don't think you just can, uh, test it in one spot.
I just added, they have to identify where they're gonna get the soils to do any filling. We also can make a requirement that all the topsoil be on site.
It's on your seeker right now. No dirt in, no dirt out.
So all the dirt they're filling, all the dirt they're filling up the property is come out of the detention time?
Well, we're gonna.
It's about thirty feet deep. You like blow it late? Which is my last point. Uh, the detention ponds in the town.
It's gonna be full anyway.
Just ask the residents if they'll like, if Eagle Chase, how well they work. I mean, there's all this modeling and stuff. Reality, stuff, I mean, it works good on paper. This is my job coming and touring water lines. Looks good on paper, in reality, sometimes it really doesn't work. Um, that's all my house, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Davis?
Yeah, my biggest concern is just what's been answered really is the, uh, the retaining pond. Is that actually gonna come out the ground? Is it gonna be raised up? Or are they just gonna go down? Are they gonna put a big bank around it, or what are they gonna do? Are they gonna build like a wall or something around the pond?
I don't recall the plans exactly, but I think a little bit of the bank.
Are they gonna bring it out the ground like a bat, so when it overflows?
That's the, the part that fills up in empty during a storm. It's, it has to outlet to the ditch.
Yeah, but they're on about fucking twelve inch pipe in there to, to drain. All we need in the winter time is that to freeze, the whole thing freezes, and it'd be just like the one, uh, south of, uh, Kruger Road there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, where it, it overflows over there, where they had to send it out to, uh, River Road eventually. They were getting that out of there. That retaining lake there came right over the top, nearly filled those people's swimming pools. But the only thing about this that I see is, most of the other developments have flooded themselves. This development is gonna flood us guys. This is what I see. Like, uh, Eagle Chase, you know, I feel sorry for the people. They bought the houses, they got flooded. People over on Thornwood, they buy the houses, they got flooded. People in this development are gonna be about eight foot higher than us. They're gonna buy these houses, and we're gonna get flooded. And if that retaining lake breaks or go, or overflows, like the gentleman said, Sawyer Creek goes nowhere. I live there. I see my yard is, is, my shed is always, you know, underwater when it, when we have a bad storm. I accept that. I lived there twenty years. Doesn't bother me. But when it's gonna get any higher, we've never been flooded yet, like hell. But we're getting close. And if that retaining lake goes, we're all gonna get it. And then somebody else is gonna be sued, because I will just spend every penny I have to make sure I get my money back. Because you'd be told so many times. That's all I got, really.
Thank you. Anybody else? Tom?
Yeah, just to, just to correct the statement that you made, Mr. D. But all the ditching has not been cleaned up. The ditch from.
The small ditches.
Eric Road to the ditch, uh, that runs parallel Lumpy Drive, has not been cleaned up, even though I was promised September that it would. I was promised in October that it would. It hasn't been done, and it doesn't look like anybody's gonna do it.
Not, hasn't been cleaned out from Eric Road to the back creek, which is probably fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred feet. It hasn't been cleaned in forty years. It's got trees growing in it. It causes all the problems on either side of Eric Road, on the west side of Eric Road, that drains the water.
You're talking about the creek coming out of Parkside area.
On Eric Road's property, that area, there's a major ditch goes through there, and we've already lost.
And they went all the way down.
Drew was to go down there and run, you know, and took a picture, and looked at it right now, like three days ago, and you had a half inch of water, and you had a twenty foot stream that jumped over the, that's jumped over, going through the middle of property and taking all the topsoil. It's gone. There's water laying there right now. It's going twelve, six feet wide right now. But tomorrow, the next day, you could certainly go look. I would recommend that the town board get together and go to some of these subdivisions, drive through them, the ones that are not, are done, and the ones that are in different stages. The people on Steve Road are gonna end up getting flooded tremendously. It's just down the road. They've covered, they've, they've taken all the fill around Nash Road and those beautiful homes. They put in, there's acres that are filled in there right now. The Roshan Estate, the creek that you're talking about, the water that's running all this water to, goes directly through that area. All the dirt that's been taken and put in that back in there is filled. They've raised up, so all those houses will be the same. All that flood plan is gone. There's just, there just isn't any more topsoil left to absorb anymore. The only thing that's stopping this whole issue in the winter time right now is the ice. If you didn't have the ice boom, then you'd have the problems you had, and that went over and plugged up Duba Creek, and everybody got it. It was on TV and everything else. Well, if some people have their way, environmentalists, whatever, and take out the ice boom, but it's not cleaning the river out bottom out, what is going to happen now? Who's gonna be responsible, especially since all the people in this room coming back and telling you the same thing? You don't have to have a great big environmental study. I'd like to see a plan view, a plan view from Eric Road, with the elevations and the elevations of the house and the fill. A simple plan view, all you gotta do is put some lines on a piece of paper, number the elevations on it. It's not a big engineering marvel. You could do it and have it ready for any meeting. I think that everybody on the town board, councilman, everything else would be actually amazed if they want that in their backyard.
Yeah, I actually think, um.
You see, just this wall here is approximately fourteen feet. That is even going to be from finished floor to that, and it's gonna be higher than that from finished floor, which is probably gonna be eighteen inches and two feet above the road. The back road, their road. So the, the amount of heights that you're talking about, these people will be looking at, they're almost their basement. They're gonna have a basement, they're gonna have basement windows. So that means they're gonna be from their lawn to the finished floor is gonna be approximately two feet. Unless they don't have any cellar windows, I don't know. As far as the soil goes, I don't know this man over here, but I did for years work all around Niagara County, worked at school with him when they were building it. Um, the water table's always been high. It's extremely high. And it's just gotten worse, because there's so much land. I realize everybody's got a different job, this, you know, but if you actually go out there and look and see what, what the plan has approved and what's still on the books is gonna prove trouble. It's just gonna be the big power, whenever the big power failure comes, then you can blame it on the power failures, or, or the hundred year storm. But it's not gonna be a hundred year storm. It's gonna be a ten year storm or a five year storm.
Okay, thank you. Counsel.
You have to realize that this area, I live, my house, where I live myself, is in Sandborn. I live on Bridgeman Road, which is extremely high. It's still part of the flood plain, because the water goes to the reservation. The reservation goes to the air force base. The air force base goes to Duba Creek. Last week, there was an outstanding picture showing you, um, Hugh, uh, Hugh Guy on it. That is what drains all of this, that little bit area that I was talking about the last meeting. That's where all that water has to go through. That little bit area come out of North Grand Island Bridge. And whether you say Burcals Creek, Sawyer Creek, this or that, camp, doesn't make any difference. Okay, I said it.
Okay. Uh, by the way, Councilman Helwig asked for pretty much the same thing you're asking for as far as the elevations go. Different wording, different wording, same thing.
Building drawing, but I guess that you're looking.
Yeah, I have. Uh, Tom?
Yeah, just, uh, one question here. Now, you discussed mitigating traffic problems by paving the land in behind Eric Road School. Wouldn't that be, be eliminating a large natural watershed by blacktopping it over?
Yep.
Adding to the drainage problem?
I'd like to.
I mean, you're, you're in a lose-lose situation here.
Can I say something about that? The property on where the school is, it's landlocked. You're talking about putting the park in his playground. Land, the, the culverts that are on the east side of that school are the property line. So in other words, you'd have to, the towns have been involved in this. There's only one way to do it, and that's for the school to take a house on either side. That might go negative, and you never done. And that's one of the issues. And that was open, where those sites are, it was open. Tremendous wreck that went on time. And it doesn't make a difference if you go behind the school and go, because it comes down to the other subdivision in Mark Sean's face. That's where it's gonna come out, and it drains this, which is, which was where the others comes together before it goes to Sawyer Creek.
Correct.
It's just something that's, it's only minutes. You ain't gonna get an extra couple of minutes, you know? That's the issue.
Okay, anybody else before we close this hearing?
I just had a quick question. When they, you talk about the twenty year storms and all that, when they do the drainage studies, do they, does that only count for rainfall, or do they ever consider snowfall?
Snow melt mixed with rain can be a hundred year storm. Maybe, maybe one of the Tims can answer that better than I can.
From, from the stormwater model in the state, you're, you're, stormwater rainfall type. Okay. I mean, for example, the snowstorm we just had, somewhere it's got six feet of snow.
Yeah, well, that's right.
After the, listen to seventy-seven, the whole freaking town flooded.
Yeah, there's, uh, no matter what you do, God can overwhelm the best engineers, so there's, you have to select something to go by. Okay, Drew, what's the next step?
Next step is for me, based upon, I'll do comments, get you a new draft of this with a resolution, so you could potentially issue this at your next meeting.
So on January, so on January fifth, we're gonna have a version of the draft with a few more, with more.
And it's for your then, or is it you wanna probably have people formally, you can always, after the resolution, add something in. You could always, say, "You missed this, add it in," or whatever. We're having, come to that meeting, whatever you wanna do. But that's the next step, is to, that's the scoping document, it gives the applicant, you need to think about, you thought about that decision, who's gonna do the drainage and traffic, now or later. Either way, you're gonna have an independent consultant, whether you do it now or later.
Can we get that up on to the website in time for folks to know what's coming?
Yeah, I will get it, I will get it first down first, and you put it up on the website.
Okay. So the next step then will be to take a look at the, the final scoping document. Is that, is that the proper word for it?
Yep, final scoping document.
And then, will the, will the builder have the opportunity of talking to us before we make that decision?
It's your decision. Your decision is, it's not even, I mean, the public can give you a comment, there's no more. It's your decision now. You heard the public, you heard from the applicant, you make a final decision on the score.
Now, the builder did give us a draft environmental impact statement, so we do have that, and that's.
That's scoping document.
Scoping document, sorry.
That's what starts the process. If this idea is, you heard it now, it's your idea. It's your decision.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, if there's nothing further, then I'm going to close this hearing.